Yeah.
There you go.
All right. We'll call the board meeting to order. I need a, um, I want everybody to come. I need a motion to go into closed session for A1, A7, and A8. Any more discussion? Others in favor? Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, the sound of the same, I feel like we might be in descriptive.
Okay. All right. We can go whichever direction you need to go. You ready? I'll call the board supervisors meeting back to order, please. Welcome, everybody that's here. I'd like to start out with the invocation by Ms. Kendra Hayden and the pledge by Ms. Sandy Elspeth, please.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the honor and ability to be involved in working for the good of our county and its citizens. Please grant wisdom to our community leaders and humble desire to govern with the needs of our citizens as a priority. Fill us with your grace and let us never forget that all we do should be in your honor and glory. Place the nature of protection around our county and its citizens and the desire on all our hearts to live according to your will. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies. Need a motion, um, what we discussed in closed session.
Rick's coming.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, hope I get this right. We only discussed, uh, give members, uh, the code 2.2-3711-A7 and A8 and what was that? A1.
There's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Right.
Any more discussion? Others in favor? Opposed?
I abstain, Mr. Chairman.
One abstention. Need a motion for the adoption of the agenda as presented in the additional agenda?
Hold on a minute.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's like we need to change the date on the additional agenda, though.
Yeah. Um, yeah, probably change the May 9th to the 14th on the additional agenda. Any more discussion? Others in favor? Minutes of the previous meeting from April the 9th. Is there a motion to approve those?
They're to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? Others in favor? Last month was my birthday at the board meeting, and this month's my wife's, so we're hitting the birthday months on meetings. Financial status, Mr. Carter?
Chairman of the board, you have some information packets available. Before I get into this, I'd like to mention, I think there was, um, some communication at one of our last meetings about trying to get, uh, some of this information put up toward the audience can see. And I hope that we can configure that, uh, have that, hopefully by your June meeting, if not, the latest July. So hopefully we'll be able to, to provide some additional. If anyone in the audience needs some of the information, we have some up here available for today. But, uh, with that, with that in mind, I'll, I'll go through these reports. Your first one is a revenue summary. Again, the bottom of Fund One, you go across, uh, budget amount was 2409-680. The amendment was 24508-680. The current amount was 469-737-20, which means our year-to-date amount was 24,564,895.07. Uh, we have a, as you can see, we have an over, uh, some money collected, uh, for that. So, uh, we're, we're excited about that. So we've got an over of 562,1407 moving into that remaining month. Funds two, three, all the way back are again summaries, uh, the various funds that the county carries. You go to page six of that report. At the bottom, you'll see 86,634,888 under the, uh, called a budget amount. The amendment was 88, uh, 364, uh, 610. The current amount was 5,531,207.73. The year-to-date was 70,248,672.96. Uh, we have an uncollected amount of 18, uh, 18,001,159.37, which is about 20% going into your, your last month. Your expenditure report is the next one. Again, these are comparisons. Fund One, again, starting from left to right, 24,408,637. Adopted, 24,806,296. Amended, current amount, 2,356,566.90. Year-to-date, 17,527,194.80. Uh, there's 7,279,101.20 left or 29%. So if you look at Fund One comparisons, your Fund One revenue over your Fund One expenditure is 7,037,699.27. Again, pages two, three, four, and five are the matching, uh, expenditure reports for the same accounts. You go to the bottom of page five, uh, far left, 87,634,888 was the adopted. Amended, 88,364.16. The current was 7,219,817.29. Your year-to-date, 64,501,093.59. You have an unencumbered balance of 23,863,516.41 or 12, 27%. So your year-to-date revenues over expenditure in all funds, 5,747,579.37. Your next page is a summary of departments, uh, that we provide to show you which departments are, uh, have, have comparisons from 18 to 19. Everyone is, is listed there. You can take a, an opportunity to look down through those, but when you get to the bottom, in May of 19, you'll see a total of 837,573.65. May of 18 was 903,5149. So we're $62,777.84 less, uh, year-to-year comparison on those AP summaries.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Uh, with, with the recent stings and ICE stuff that's happened with sheriffs, when, when will that show up in our, in the jail portion? Will that show up?
It would depend on when all the processing and all of that occurs.
It will be after the, the fact of all the, the end total?
It could be June, it could be July. It's just a matter of when everything is properly accounted for. Your next page is a, is a small, uh, spreadsheet dating back all the way to 11, 12, uh, right on up to 18, 19. I usually just compare the last two years. Uh, if you look at 18, or 17, 18, for difference in your deposits and expenditures, 6,521,775.12. 18, 19, your difference is 7,385,908.61. So comparing those two numbers, they're 864,133.49 ahead. And those, of course, are, are timing mechanisms, but nonetheless, uh, they're indicators of where you are. The next report is the one that has the side-by-side comparisons. And this report comes, uh, straight from the treasurer's office. And the title of it is County Expenses and Appropriations. Just, uh, kind of hitting the eye points of that. Uh, if you look at your bank balance and CD investments from 18, those two combined is The same combination for 430 of 19, 12,955,851.37. So there was a plus, 812,584.60 on that. Your deposits in 18 was 5,847,471.59. Deposits in 19 was 5,133,027.77. You were up 48,549.18 on deposits. Your expenses in 18 was 6295,662.67. In 19, April was 6411,557.01. So you're up 115,894.34 in your expenses. Your subtotals, which is a, a subtraction of the deposit expenditures off the top number, in 38 was 10,932,075.69. In 19, April 30, 11,677,315.13. So you're up 745,239.44. Your unspent, which is identified, uh, on your next page, in 18 was 639,391.39. Your 19 was 651,295.34, so a small increase of 11,903.95, which brings us to the balance. And that's the number you look at when you consider your appropriations. In, uh, April of 18, you had an available balance of 10,292,684.30. In April of 2019, 11,26,019.79. So you have an increase, uh, year-to-year of 733,335.49. Couple other things I'll point out. That increase, uh, of 733.35, uh, does have the, what's called the sheriff's radar numbers in it. In 430 of, of 18, that, that account had a million 22,944.35. In 19, that account had 724,803.04, which was, uh, 298,141.31 less. So from that standpoint, the radar number continues to decrease, but the overall fund balance increases. There are a few, uh, small increments in your CDs that you can see listed below.
Michael?
Yes?
Why is that radar sign decreasing there?
Utilization. It's a, it's a utilization of the available funds.
About the sheriff's department?
Yes, ma'am.
And also a decrease in revenues coming in over historical increments.
There's a, there's been a, a depletion of some of those collectibles and an increase in expenditures of such. Uh, one thing that I'll point out, just as a, kind of like a, a fun fact, um, if you go back and look at April 30th of 2015, just to give you an idea of where we were, uh, four year, four cycles ago, our available balance was 7,838,242.21. So from 15 to 19, we've gained an available balance of 3,187,777. I think that's pretty important numbers to verify. If you flip to the next page, you'll see the, uh, the expenses and unspent appropriations that I identified earlier. Those relative to stay around the same. In 18, uh, social services had 126,757. In 19, they had 107,613. Uh, school and capital outlay in 18 had 478,096. In 19, they had 418,496. And the county in 18 had 34,537. And in 19, 62,184. So again, those numbers bring you back to your available balance. The next page is a, is a tracking mechanism the treasurer's accountability does for, uh, debt, uh, taxes, et cetera. Uh, one thing I'll point out on that is if you look at your 430, 18, uh, top half, total loss, oh, three to present was 8,958,951.18. A year later, total loss, 7,977,213.65. So we're eating into that balance. We're now at 1,18,681,53. And that, that, of course, is, is a step in the right direction. The uncollected, uh, in 18 was 3,598,179. Uncollected in 19 is 3,410,193. Again, that's a decrease of 187,986.34. And your last one on that, which is your uncollected county taxes, uh, 17, less the PPTRA was 1,332,312. And 18, and 1,268,646.42. So again, starting decrease of 63,665. The remaining, uh, three, four pages are your treasurer's accountability report that comes directly from the treasurer's office to identify the available balances, the cash in, cash out, and any balance of all the accounts the county has. Certainly encourage you to look at those if you have any questions. I would, I would attempt to make an answer to that. These come directly from the treasurer, so he, he too can answer that. But carrying all that, getting all that together, uh, looking at your appropriations total listing for today, you certainly have your available balance, so you can consider all the appropriations listed on your additional agenda.
Thank you very much. Any questions from anybody? Not all, it's 5:15, open citizen's time? Nobody signed up on the sign-up sheet? Does anybody in the audience wish to speak? Citizen's time? Quiet house today. Should I leave that open for a few minutes, I think? I'll leave citizen's time open for another five minutes or so. Um, I'm gonna go ahead with the payment and invoices. General county accounts payable listing, 837,573.65. Auto draft rural development, 8,974. AEP century lien bills, 25,000. County administration fund of 5,000 for total county appropriations plus carryover of Motion and a second. Any more discussion? Others in favor? Social services, which is on page three, May 15th through the May, the 30th of 2019, 350,000. June 1st through June the 11th, 2019, 60,000. For total, social services of 410,000.
Second. And I wouldn't make it May 31st, I think it's, they still need to pay a bill that day.
Oh, because it's 31 days in May?
Yeah.
And I completely understand their, their memo said May 30th. We can certainly add one, it's not gonna hurt anything.
I got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Others in favor? Schools operating fund, destruction, 3,200,000. Administration, attendance and health, 115,000. Transportation, 285,000. Facilities, 400,000. School food service, 375,000. Technology, 75,000. Total school operating fund of 4,450,000.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? Others in favor? School debt, capital outlay, 245,000. Any more discussion? Others in favor? Sheriff, fund 748, 1,200.86. Any more discussion? Others in favor? Recovery corp, fund 749, 32,174, 147.09. Any more discussion? Others in favor? I guess we need to go by the times of these others and go on to, back to the additional agenda or new business that matters. Mr. C.
Mr. Chairman, it's okay. Looks like we've got about 10 minutes left. Does that look like citizen's time, about 10 minutes? Would it, would it be okay with the, uh, board to, some of these will go quicker than yours?
Yes.
Would it be okay to go out of order?
Oh, yeah, I'm fine with that. That's, yep.
Okay. I think, uh, I think number four, which is the scheduling of a public hearing.
Conner Rock Green Cove Laurel Valley Association Festival application.
Yes, sir.
We need to schedule the public hearing for that.
Seven, seven, July night.
5:30 PM. We got a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? Others in favor? Need to move around, anything else?
Um, I think, I think we could probably do the Green Acres Drive Evergreen Court. Lisa almost bought over here for me.
All right. Ms. Lisa, we got Green Acres Drive, Evergreen Court Revenue Share Projects.
Okay, I have a reservation here.
From page 71, yes.
Page 71. As it reads, whereas the Smith County Board of Supervisors desires to submit an application for allocation of funds up to 124,033 through the Virginia Department of Transportation fiscal year 2019 through 2020, revenue sharing program. And whereas 124,033 of these funds are requested to fund the road improvement of Green Acres Drive and Evergreen Court to Howley, Virginia. And whereas the Smith County Board of Supervisors hereby supports this application for an allocation of 124,033 through the Virginia Department of Transportation fiscal year 2019 through 2020 revenue sharing program. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Smith County hereby commits to fund its local share of preliminary engineering, right-of-way construction as applicable of the project under the agreement with the Virginia Department of Transportation in accordance with the project financial documents. Be it further resolved that Michael L. Carter, county administrator, is authorized to execute all agreements and/or amendments for any approved projects with the Virginia Department of Transportation.
Motion to approve this, President. Move to the floor.
Second.
Motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Any more discussion? Others in favor? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I add one thing?
Yes, sir.
These are now biennial budgets. So the budget is no longer on a, a year-to-year, it's a two-year program. So what we have done on this is we've built this into your upcoming budget, but the expectation could roll into the next year as well because of the timing and mechanism. I just want to make sure that, uh, I know we have several interested in that area. I don't want them to think that just because they didn't get it one year, they might not get it the next because it's a two-year program now.
So if you guys get any questions about that, you'll, you can let them know. You want to go special?
Um, I don't see Charlie Harrington wants to.
He's, he's not here yet.
Okay. We can do the audit and engagement letter if you'd like. That's right. Do that one.
Page 17, 77.
Each year, each year, we, uh, when we bring a, an auditor on board, they have an engagement letter. This is pretty standard. Um, it's identifying their scope of service. It's, it's long and lengthy. I will not be the first one to acknowledge that it's not. Uh, at the end of it, they, they identify a beginning of May 20th of 19 to issue reports to get our audit to us by the, uh, November 30th of 19, uh, deadline. Each year, we, uh, provide them with this letter that, that gets the wheels rolling. And I would ask, although it's, it's several, it's three or four pages long, it's single print, I would ask that you consider doing that. They are scheduled to be up here next week, so. I'd ask for your consideration on that. Got a motion on the floor? And a second.
Any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Michael, I would just like to say, last year, there was some pretty glaring errors in that final report that was actually embarrassing. So if you wouldn't mind to communicate to them to review this?
I will, I will.
Before they submit them?
I will make sure that the i's are dotted, the t's are crossed, and the o's are not circled, and the sevens aren't crossed.
Okay, sounds good.
Others in favor?
Uh, agenda, agenda-wise, I, we need Charlie here to finish that one, so I'll have to come back to number two, if that's okay.
Mr. Stevenson, do you want to do the building and grounds recommendation?
Page 23 for that one.
Mm-hmm.
I want to do the eighth because I wasn't hearing, but I can't do the 23. Meeting of the Smith County Board of Supervisors Building and Grounds Committee was held at the county office building on Wednesday, April 24th, 2009, 24 PM. Committee members present, staff members present, and others with J.S. Staley. I called a meeting to order at 3:59. Michael Carter, county administrator, presented update to the committee concerning the back of the dragon project. Mr. Carter stated the project was progressing well and the county received an appraisal for the easement that it needed to go into the construction phase. Mr. Carter, Mr. Duschen, met with Wayne O'Neill, J.S. Staley presented him with a copy of the appraisal for a property amount of 2,500. Excuse me. Mr. Staley stated he would like to donate the property with the following conditions: The project to be named after his father; stipulations overlooked must be kept clean, neat, and free of graffiti. Lastly, should any ensuing, ensuing entities attempt to amend the above provisions, the property shall revert back to the heirs, heirs of J.S. Staley, Jr. Discussion continued on the matter. Dry Valley District Supervisor Rick Levins made a motion for the staff to communicate with V. Doc and county attorney Jeff Campbell concerning a request being made by Mr. Staley to allow for them to give feedback and approval on stipulations. Sovereign District Supervisor Roscoe calls second motion. Fourth District Supervisor Phil Stevenson was not in favor of the motion. Michael Carter, county administrator, then informed the committee that had been brought to his attention, there are some dead trees on the backside of the cornerstone building that would likely need to be cut down. Dry Valley District Supervisor Rick Levins made a motion to request quotes for the removal of the trees. Sovereign District Supervisor Roscoe calls second motion. All agree, unanimous. The meeting was adjourned at 4:30 AM.
We need to go back and have votes on those committee recommendations. Have some of those already?
Yeah, the, the next committee meeting will actually address a few of those.
Which is why I was getting that due, I don't, we just leave that for informational stakes and go to the next committee meeting to, to make a, a motion?
If, if the board so desires.
You want to take that on A for May for me? Since I was in prison.
I can, or, or Mr. Kyle, would you like to do, or you'd like for me to do, the next building grounds committee meeting? That's on page three of your additional agenda.
Twenty-three. I can't do that. You can condense it a little better, not.
Okay.
Page would work.
Yeah. On page 23 of your additional agenda is a continuation meeting from the, from the previous building and grounds, uh, meeting. This one occurred on the ADA. Uh, and, and we'll start again. Uh, presented, uh, presented an update to the committee concerning the back of the dragon. Uh, at the last committee meeting, a request had been received of the situations, uh, stipulations to be communicated between V. Doc and county attorney. Uh...at the last committee meeting, a request had been received for the stipulations, uh...stipulations to be communicated between VDOT and county attorney. And again, as a reminder, the...the stipulations were: The one on the deed of conveyance needs to specifically reference the J. Stewart-Staley Memorial Overlook. The second one was the deed needs to stipulate the overlook must be kept clean, neat, and free of graffiti. And the third one, should any ensuing entities attempt to abrogate or amend above provisions, the property described shall revert back to the heirs of J. S. Staley, Jr. So in between the first meeting and that meeting, we had an opportunity to talk some of these over. So additionally, I informed the committee that VDOT had responded concerning the above mentioned stipulations. And VDOT really doesn't have any issue except for the one identified as should ha...should any ensuing entities attempt to abrogate or amend the above provisions, uh...that it would revert back to the Staley heirs. And they said that basically that they couldn't accept it with that stipulation as it would be challenging to make any investment in sight without obtaining the clear rights. We identified that with, uh...Mr. Staley and...and his clarification, and I guess Roscoe, you're...you're the only member here right now of that commission, but, um...according to Mr. Staley, we could remove that stipulation because he had...had thought about and wanted to remove that stipulation. So we get...we get past that one. That's one off the block. Uh...the committee then discussed the other two stipulations and...and identified clearly that no committee is opposed to placing a plaque or a small marker to communicate...to commemorate the dedication of the project to J. Stewart-Staley. And at the time, the only remaining issue seems to be the stipulation concerning the upkeep of the site and the removal of graffiti. Uh...there was a conversation with, uh...Mr. Campbell or county attorney that...that basically, and Mr. Campbell, you correct me if...if I'm wrong, that if this provision is placed in the conveyance of the deed, the county would be the responsible party for such cleanup and maintenance.
Okay.
Okay. So with...with that in mind, the committee continued to discuss this particular stipulation. And ultimately, the committee asked for me to communicate with the Town of Marion and the Smith County Tourism Association to consider being the entity named in the deed as the responsible party for the upkeep and maintenance of the site. So what...yeah...I think Kelly has some information from the Tourism Association, and I have a continued, uh...communication with the Town of Marion. Kelly, if you could provide them with the tourism first.
Thanks, Mr. Carter. Today, communicating the request from the committee, and his response was too bold. Um...they don't have the staff or the budgets to clean up, and his request would be for the county to step up and maintain the property.
What did you request? I'm sorry, Kelly.
What did?
He requested what?
He would like for the county to step up and maintain the property. The Tourism Association doesn't have the budget or manpower to accommodate.
Had...had your...your conversation with Mr. Carter's continuing with the Town of Marion, is that what you were saying?
Yeah, I was finding my emails so that I don't misquote anything. I had asked Bill...Bill Rush, town manager, if there would be any interest from the town to...to provide some of that. And, um...he told me that it was certainly worth a discussion. He was going to make a call to Mr. Staley to further understand for clarifications on what that entailed, um...and that he would get back with me. So there hasn't been a decline or a...no, it's...it's under consideration with the town to see how they may be able to assist in that...that portion of that stipulation.
At one time, was there not a...some communication with the park, even?
Park Service, uh...I actually called the park manager, Mr. Nate Clark.
Right.
On the phone while we were in the committee meeting. And Nate...anyone that knows Nate, Nate will bend over backwards and help whomever he can. Uh...he clearly identified that they will be there on patrols there. That's part of their system now. They will be up there multiple times in a day. Uh...there may be opportunities for them to help out. He didn't commit fully.
Mm-hmm.
But to help out with the trash removal. He also indicated that they did not have the resources and manpower that it means whatsoever to pressure wash or remove any type of graffiti from the area. So, uh...they were certainly, you know, committed to certain aspects of it, but they could not commit themselves to, you know, any type of graffiti removal or anything of that nature.
So then, what, we just pay an artist to come in and mark it up from the get-go and be done with it? Be a lot easier.
So someone has to be named on the deed that is responsible, is that what?
The...the...one of the stipulations from Mr. Staley basically identified the need for some...a responsible entity to be able to assist in that overall...overall, uh...cleaning and maintenance of it.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'm talking with Ron this morning. We talked about this yesterday in the committee meeting. Uh...what he told me...informed me this morning was J.S. was good as...as long as we put the plaque up there. He would not worry about the other two at this point. Maybe we could pass this with the stipulation that, uh...somehow that only...only that the other two stipulations will not be adhered to, or something of that effect.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
The second meeting said the deed of conveyance needs to specifically reference J. S. Stewart-Staley Memorial Overlook, which, uh...I thought it was going to be named the back of the dragon overlook, and he was going to get a plaque. So maybe somebody will come...clarify that to me. Uh...I don't think anybody has a problem with a small plaque. Do you name the whole overlook? I mean, is it back of dragon overlook, or is it J. S. Staley overlook?
It's...sorry. To me, it's all about how you spin it. If he's got a small plaque and there's a bigger sign indicating back of the dragon, then that's what it's going...you know what I'm saying?
All right.
Regardless of what's on the paper in the courthouse, it's...it's how it's marketed and how it's promoted.
I think as far as passing the other two, I think that the building trash...or the trash pickup and especially the graffiti more than anything is going to be something of...of huge concern and who takes care of it. Uh...you know, we're already understaffed and are solid ways to, uh...end of it. Uh...Tourism says they don't have anybody. We really don't have anybody staff to take care of all the looks, especially come on the graffiti in. So I think those are two very important details that need to be addressed before we vote on this. So, uh...I'd like to at least hear what the Town of Marion has to say on it.
That leaves some questions open, but...and I don't know, we need...our scheduling is on track.
We're...we're okay so far.
As far as all that goes, and even with the information that Mr. Ackings just gave, that's new information. We've got to hear what the Town of Marion has to say. So I don't think we need to take action on it tonight. I think that those are some questions we're prepared of. If he wants to pull them off, okay, or if somebody has to be done, or if...those need ironed out because this is going to be a...a big deal or a done deal, so.
Well, even if he pulls them off his wishes, I mean, you know, if we build a thing, graffiti's got to be built.
Oh, yeah, it'll have to be cleaned.
I mean, somebody's got to clean it. Somebody's got to be responsible for it. And then, you know, if you get a wide area for some people, the park has always been an issue with...with trash there, so those two issues need to be dealt with in some kind of form, some kind of plan, or who you're going to move forward with it. You just can't send, uh...some kind of maintenance guy up there to take off graffiti. It's not going to happen.
Who does that on the road? I just wondered who did, because there's graffiti on the roads.
Well, I think it's painted on.
Do that.
On...on that particular site, VDOT took some car and splashed over the pumpings on the road.
Well, it's a shame that...just in general, that...that's got to be a...something that's ironed out for...something to progress forward is out. Well, we got to deal with that, so that's...that's a shame, but, um...
Well, Bill indicates to me that he'll have a conversation with his council at their next meeting, so I...I don't think we're far off at least getting that answered.
Yep.
Um...I think...I think maybe we have an answer from the Tourism Association based on what was relayed. Uh...Mr. Staley did call in here today and indicated that he would not be here tonight, but he'd be on speed dial. But, uh...if...if we're wanting to...to allow all the...
Yep.
Uh...entities involved, the...the ability to communicate and discuss and provide a response, maybe it's something you consider in June and...and move from there with it.
Do we need to have a motion to continue this or send it back to committee for those clarifications, then come back at our June meeting?
Yeah, because I'd be real interested to...to have another conversation with...with Mr. Staley if...if he is in...in fact, removed that other stipulation. That could...that could make the discussion a lot easier as well.
I'd get a motion.
I'm making a motion.
Logistically, you're going to have to figure that stuff out anyway, and putting this on the deed is...man, it's kind of an insult. It's not odd we wouldn't think of that in the first place. Like, we're going to take care of the trash, and we're going to take care of any graffiti. You don't have to tell us, do you? I just...I just think...
Maybe, um...is there somebody, uh...you got an idea or? I...I don't remember. Was that a rock wall? Does anyone remember?
It's a...it's a...yeah, it's a rock wall. That's what the rendering shows is a rock wall. And then some...I think they describe it as rustic guardrail. It's the non-gavinosa shine, it's the brown.
Yeah.
Guardrail.
So I...I...it'd be nice to have some kind of figure what it takes to get graffiti off the rock.
I said this as a joke, but we really should explore finding somebody that would put a mural on the side of that rock...of that wall. You know, if there's already something there of a graffiti nature, you know, not like what's on the side of the building downtown Marion, but something...
Some of the graffiti I've seen on the road up there, I don't think that's going to stop.
Well, I don't want appendages or anything.
I don't...I think it'd be graffiti on top of it. My thinking was it'd be nice to have some kind of maintenance cost. It's going to cost us some kind of ideal maintenance-wise. I don't know if that's possible, but anyway, I'll make a motion to table this and refer it back to the bill committee for other investigation or more information.
Got a motion on the tables or a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a timeframe as far as available funding? Is that...there...there's nothing with that.
Well, there is. There...there are two grades. There's, uh...there's a tobacco commission grant, the TA grant through the, uh...but both of those, we've already received, uh...word from them that those can be extended if it...if it does occur. And...and they also reference that typically in VDOT projects, that's a no.
Okay, good. All right. Okay.
Um...all those in favor? Opposed?
And the last one on that one was going back to the trees that were mentioned in the previous meeting. Uh...received the plaque, went down and looked at the plaque. Uh...there's good and bad news. The good news is the trees aren't on county property. Uh...the bad news is they're on the next door property. And, uh...they...they need to come down regardless. So we went ahead and obtained some quotes. We had those just in case. I sent the neighboring property owner a notification letter today that says, hey, uh...we've...we've noticed some...some, uh...trees that have dilapidated and expired, and they're causing a concern for...for our structure, and we'd appreciate you looking at those and...and considering bringing those down. So I asked for a written response back, and, uh...once we get that, we'll see where we go.
Okay. All right. Very good.
We have to...we need something legal from him if we get them trees on him. Some written permission from other landowners or something?
My letter was geared toward him doing it, but if he decides not to do it, then that kicks in another bottle of wax Mr. Campbell can talk about.
Okay.
So, absolutely.
Well, I had continued citizens' time, and no one was here. Has anybody new came in that wishes to speak at citizens' time? I'll close citizens' time.
Mr. Harrington's here.
Yep.
He probably like to get out of here. We got to take...
Uh...Mr. Harrington, you want to come up with the emergency operations plan?
Yes, sir. A and B. Hello, Jerry, you're aware that emergency operations plan is required. Emergency management is one of the necessary items to function under if you can save and to, uh...be entitled to receiving federal funding and other type of things. Uh...emergency ops plan has to be, uh...provised every four years. That's where we are. Uh...the plan was sent to you by email. We quit doing that in hard copy now, and it's posted on the county website. We make that aware everyone, depending who wants to copy if they can, put it on flash drive or whatever is necessary. We no longer have the copy cost, and I no longer have to carry a whole big bunch of little books around. Uh...very few changes that were made, or a few definitions that were tweaked a little bit based upon some situations that occurred and we felt like it was necessary to. Uh...dial a few things in just so there are no misunderstandings. Otherwise, you're basically looking at the template that is the approved emergency operations plan throughout the state. I'll ask supervisors to, uh...adopt that plan for another four years and put that into place. And the other thing that I would like to ask, Kelly, I'm sorry, I didn't get the...a lot going on. The National Incident Management System, NIMS, you all knew that acronym. The board several years ago, uh...did a resolution stating that we would follow NIMS protocol in any emergency situation that we had. The resolution's still good, but I'd like to ask the board if you would resolve it again, just to freshen that nothing has changed in that. All it states is that the county understands the necessity for NIMS and agrees to abide by that. That is a federal regulation. And by the way, for those of you who are sitting here that have not taken the NIMS one hundred class as members of the board supervisors, that is a requirement. It is online. If you haven't done that, if you'd say something, Mr. Carter, we can give you the website. But, uh...technically, everyone sitting here is supposed to have that if you're receiving any federal funds whatsoever. It's a simple online class, but it explains incident management and how it works. So those are the two items that we have to nod. Are there any questions regarding the emergency operations plan? I'm sure you all sat up and read it all night long.
Any questions from anybody? What's the pleasure of the board?
I moved about most resolutions. Do you need a motion for each one, or can we do one?
We need a motion for each one, yes.
All right, um...we'll go with the first one. So I moved to the...
Emergency operations plan? And there's a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Mr. Chairman, who's second, Dan?
Roscoe. Mr. Collins.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh...make a motion to adopt the NIMS resolution.
Motion to adopt the NIMS.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Pingless.
Mr. A., you want to do the SWIFA annual report?
Yeah, I can go through it real quick. Um...everyone should have a twenty eighteen annual report. Um...it was...twenty eighteen was an interesting year for SWIFA, um...with activity and land transactions. Um...myself, Heather Williams, and Mr. Dean represent Smith County. And Lynn Snoggs just reporting Eddie Cope, the head, uh...that represent Washington. Uh...the things that I will highlight, if you go to, uh...page three, under revenues and operating costs, uh...tax revenues generated from real estate and general tools, business personal property received in twenty seventeen was ninety-seven thousand four forty-five twenty. So if you take that, divide it by two, which is the agreement, we got forty-eight seven twenty-two sixty out back from SWIFA. Uh...we get eighteen hundred dollars in rental income from hay rocks. That's, uh...so basically, right at fifty thousand dollars that we got back, uh...from SWIFA. Our contribution to SWIFA, uh...I think it equated...we got back roughly fifty thousand two hundred and forty dollars or something of that nature total, and we make a fifty thousand dollar contribution to the entity. And we make a $50,000 contribution to the entity. That's what we made. So we add that $50,000, we return $240. Our annual operating budget at SWIFA is $121,000. In 18, our largest expense was mowing. I'll show you math. That will have changed come in 2019 because of land transaction. If you, the biggest thing that went on in 2018 obviously was the acquisition by space site for their state move to be located on lots inside of the SWIFA park. So, and that's progressing along. They going through their planning and getting all their building and zoning approved through Washington County and groundbreaking has occurred and everything's moving and progressing really well with that. The next thing I'll draw your attention to, and this explains why mowing is no longer a major cost. If you go to page six, uh, all right, so end of 2018 coming into 2019, a lot of things happened with some, with some stuff at SWIFA. AEP, if you look at the end of the cul-de-sac there, we'll come on the end of the park and look at the end of the cul-de-sac where it says AEP service station. In 2018, AEP acquired a larger portion of land, a larger parcel of land. So that took away. And then lots 10, 11, and the remainder of 12 that AEP had not acquired is now space sites. So that's all gone. We had a utility approach us. They were needing space to park some trailers and lots eight and nine, they approached us. They have kind of a contingent boundary there where they can access lots eight and nine. So we entered into a transaction to convey lots eight and nine to utility. It's one of those things where it really didn't stimulate any immediate growth, but the size and quality that they all kind of felt the need to take care of. So all that's left are, all that's left in the park is lots one, two, and four, and lots five and seven. And the backside, which is kind of undeveloped. We, so we're not mowing hardly anything. We were finished mowing lots eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12, which is now gone. So the operational cost is, has really went down. And if you look through your budgets for proposed for 2019, neither Smith or Washington County are, are gonna be contributing, my understanding, I don't know, I can't speak for Washington County, but my understanding is there's no contribution to SWIFA in the amount of $50,000. If you look at the financials on it, there's a, there's a fund balance of about $900,000. So we, I think through the appointment of, as Mr. Dean came off, we put Mr. McLean, Mr. John McLean, was now on SWIFA and has accepted the role of chairman. So it's a pretty interesting time as we finish this park out and figure out how to, you know, what to do with that remaining fund balance and the remaining pieces of land. 2019 should be an interesting time. But as a county, it'd be nice to not, and the revenue is gonna grow with space site being built, but to not have the expenditure and to continue to receive those revenues would be a good swing for us. But that's, that's the gist of everything that went on in 2018 with SWIFA.
Any questions from anybody? Thanks, Curtis. I'm gonna run down the committee recommendation, Budget Committee recommendation on page 24 and 5. Get that one done. Of course, we've been having budget meetings twice a week for, I can't remember when they started and...
That's a while.
Yeah, a while. So, um, so, and I think you guys have gotten some information sent to you along the way from our meetings. This was a committee meeting that we had on May the 7th. Mr. Richardson came, gave us some updates. Mr. Shuler and Mark Blevins from the Sheriff's Department were there, presented a discussion on leasing programs for the automobiles. We're still continuing that conversation. There is a recommendation to, for a budget transfer of $2,000 from the Smith County Maintenance Department, from the heating services to transfer to janitorial. And that is a committee recommendation. Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor? Then there's another request from the county administration to transfer $14,000 from salary and wages to the legal department. And that's a committee recommendation as well. Is there any questions or discussion on that?
Mr. Chairman, may I ask why?
Yes, ma'am.
We, uh, we were getting close on the budgeted amount.
And what was the budgeted amount?
$60,000.
I thought the contract was $75,000 last year.
There's a cap of a hundred. It was like, yeah, we renewed it, but there's a cap of a hundred.
Yeah.
But we were getting close to that 60. We still have today in June to go.
Okay.
So we wanted to make sure that we had enough to cover anything there.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? And, um, Mr. Ray made a motion to recommend scheduling a public hearing for the county budget on June the 11th at 6:00. So that's a committee recommendation from the Budget Committee as well. So any discussion on that?
A quick question. When will the rest of us get a copy of it?
We hope to have that all out by the end of the week. We're gonna try to create a link that'll provide a little different viewing opportunities this year, but hope to have that out by the end of this week.
Any more discussion on the setting the public hearing for June the 11th at 6:00? All those in favor? Okay, that was all. Right on cue, we're timed at, oh, 6:00. I'll open a public hearing for the Smith County School Board budget for fiscal year 2019 and 2020 on page 22 and 23 of your agenda. Mr. Carter or Mr. Richardson, whichever one of y'all, if you agree with that at first, please.
I'll do that, Mr. Chairman. I noticed a public hearing on the Smith County School Budget for fiscal year commence in July 1, 2019, June 30, 2020, on May 14, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. This budget synopsis is prepared and published in accordance with Section 15.2 dash 2506 and 22.1-93, the Code of Virginia of 1950 as amended. The budget has been prepared and proposed on the basis of estimates made by the Smith County School Board. The adoption of the proposed budget shall require a monthly appropriation by the Smith County Board Supervisors as required in Section 15.2 dash 2506 for any contemplated expenditures. The Smith County Board Supervisors will conduct a hearing for the purpose of receiving public comments on the proposed school board budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019. The public hearing will be held in the Board Supervisors Meeting Room, 121 Bagley Circle, Smith County Office Building on May 14, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. Subject to the rules procedure of the Board Supervisors at the above-mentioned daytime place, any citizen of Smith County may appear and express their opinion. A full copy of the proposed Smith County School Budget is on file at the Office of the County Administrator, 121 Bagley Circle, Suite 100, Marion, Virginia, and may be viewed during regular business hours, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. And now, as a, as a brief comparison, I'll begin with the revenue summary for the operations budget. State revenue 2018-19 was $27,425,895. For 1920, $27,586,055 for a difference of $160,160. Local revenue 2018-19, $7,958,50, 1920, $7,815,575 for a decrease of $135,275. Federal revenue 1819, $5,437,419, 1920, $5,529,055 for a $91,636 increase. State sales tax 2018-19, $4,795,569, 1920, $4,973,005 for an increase of $177,436. And under revenue 1819, $2,489,029, 1920, $2,657,641 for an increase of $168,612. Total operations revenue summary, $48,098,762 in 2018-19, 2019-20, $48,561,331 for an increase of $462,569. On the expenditure summary for the operations budget, instruction for 2018-19, $34,446,904. 2019-2020, $35,56,46 for an increase of $609,142. Administration 2018-19, $1,452,675, 1920, $1,454,563 for an increase of $1,888. Transportation 1819, $2,629,108, 1920, $2,513,032 for a decrease of $1,160,76. Facilities 2018-19, $4,491,65, 1920, $4,340,455 for a decrease of $1,497,10. Food services 1819, $3,705,78, 1920, $3,802,506 for an increase of $1,019,28. And technology 1819, $1,379,332, 1920, $1,394,729 for an increase of $15,397. Total operations 1819, $48,098,762, 1920, $48,561,331 for an increase of $462,569. Capital outlay and debt service budget for the year ending June 30, 2020. Revenue summary, local funds 1819, zero. 1920, zero. Difference, zero. Local funds debt service 1819, $2,205,460, 1920, $2,192,564 for a decrease of $12,896. Other funds interest rebate 1819 was $4,87,113, 1920, $4,87,113, difference of zero. Total capital outlay on revenue, $2,692,573 in 1819, $2,679,677 in 1920 for a decrease of $12,896. And lastly, an expenditure summary for the capital outlay and debt service budget, capital outlay facilities in 1819, zero. 1920, zero. Difference, zero. Capital outlay and debt service for 1819, $2,692,573, for 1920, $2,679,677 for a decrease of $12,896. And total capital outlay 2018-19, $2,692,573 in 1819, 1920, $2,679,677 for a decrease of
You have the rules?
I do have the rules.
Mr. Chairman, I move, we got such a role participation, we waived the rules, reading of the rules.
Appreciate it. Got a motion and a second to base the reading of the rules. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Is anybody signed up? Kelly, do you know? Nobody signed up to speak at the public hearing? Does anybody wish to speak?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Carter.
Mr. Superintendent, I know it would.
Yes, sir, please.
Good evening.
We've been instructed to not keep you too long because Mr. Blevins needs you until hell.
Graduation tonight. May I provide copies of the...
Yes, please.
I've got a nice, bound copy due before our term.
My questions are in this one.
We keep that one. Keep that one.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Harrington, if you have any questions?
Thank you.
Has the numbers changed in this conference?
Thank you for the opportunity to present our Smith County School Budget to you tonight. We want to start out by thanking the relationship between the Board of Supervisors and the school board. We did meet on one occasion this year with their budget committees and very nice reciprocity between both with the view of educating our students in Smith County. And as the letter stated that I presented to you all earlier in the budget process, we do believe that we have some of the best students in the nation. We have great teachers, we have great students, and our students will become our leaders at some point in society. And through a collaborative effort with you all, I think we're providing a very good education for our students. The budget book has a little bit of a different look to it this year. We have some color, we have some pictures, and I hope it's more appealing to the public and to you all. But I do want to thank the team at the school board office for helping to put this together. There are some highlights that I do want to hit, to talk about. One, all schools are fully accredited in Smith County, which accolades to our students, to our teachers, and to the families of Smith County school students. The budget itself, we have budget priorities, and you can, you can see through, but our budget priorities are on page 12. And these are established by the Smith County School Board with number one being improve employee compensation and fringe benefits for all job categories in order to provide competitive salaries and benefits that attract and retain outstanding school division employees. And as I speak about this, you'll hear about the additional finances coming to Smith County schools and how we use those. And that will tie primarily to number one with compensation for our employees. Additionally, you'll see there are 11 priorities for Smith County schools and maintain staffing rates here for kindergarten through third grade and also maintain class size reduction at those primary grades. That's a primary focus for Smith County schools. I won't read the rest of those. But those are the two primary issues for Smith County. We have budgeted, and I'm going to refer you back to page nine. This is our average daily membership that goes back to 2002, 2003. And you'll see that we have just seen a reduction in students throughout the time of Smith County schools, and we are budgeting for a reduction of 95 students going into next year, which would be 4,074 students. This is not an anomaly to Smith County. This is southwest Virginia. We're seeing population drop in public education throughout southwest Virginia. And, um, and the state fortunately compensated us for that in Roman law some last year. This year, we do not, but we've been able to work with the budget and still be able to provide some additional benefits to our employees. An additional component that's tied to our budget, we had a 2.1% reduction in health insurance. As you recall, a couple of years ago, we were coming telling you we had a 22.7% increase. So a 2.1% decrease is a blessing for Smith County schools. So we weren't quite budget neutral. We saw that as a benefit to us. Mr. Carter read over the revenue budget and the expenditure budget, but I would like to highlight on page 17, the numbers that he reflected. If you look at a revenue per pupil, if you take each individual student and the cost to educate that student, the bottom pie graph illustrates the cost and the representation cost per student and how that plays. So state revenue, $6,771. Local revenue, $1,918. Federal revenue, $1,357. State sales tax, $1,221. And other revenue, $652. It's a little bit of a different way to look at the, look at the finances, but again, that's revenue coming to us. That's money coming in. And the... And the expenditure side, if you look on page 22, this explains how the finances are being utilized to educate the child and what the money actually goes toward. With instruction, 72.19% of our budget is tied to instruction. Administration, 3%. Transportation, five, a little over 5%. Facilities, 8.94%. Food service, 7.83%. And technology, 2.87%. So that gives you a little bit of a different view on how the funds are utilized. There is one particular piece that I would like to highlight, and I hate to take you back and forth in the budget book, but on page 16, Mr. Carter mentioned a reduction in local revenue, and again, revenue money coming to Smith County Schools. And when you look at the local revenue in 2019, our current year, $7,950,850. In FY '20, the upcoming budget, $7,815,575. Now, that looks like, and it lists, a reduction of $135,275 from the locality. But I need to explain what that reflects. As the year progresses, once we come, once we arrive at June 30th, if there's money left over in the school board budget, we appeal to you to grant us use of carryover funds. We call that carryover money that goes from one fiscal year to the next. So what happened in FY '19, our current year, we requested carryover funds for $135,275, and that was granted by this board. So we utilized those funds for a heating system at the Career Center, tile work at Marion Senior High School, tile work at Marion Middle School. There were several capital improvement projects that we listed for consideration by the school board and the Board of Supervisors, and that was approved by both boards. So when you see this, don't mistake that as a reduction of revenue coming from the locality. That's just reflective of the use of carryover funds in the current year.
Makes sense to us. I hope it makes sense to other people as well.
And we clarified that in our meetings as well. With the school population, we've made that very clear with our administrators.
Very good.
One thing that we, you know, we have additional revenue coming in, as Mr. Carter mentioned, the total comparison from 19 to 20 is an increase of $449,673. Now, that is going toward primarily, primarily three things, and it's very heavy on the top two. A 3% flat raise for teachers. And with that, the way we equate a raise, and we call it a flat raise, and that's a local term, I don't think that you'll find that in a finance book, we take the top of the teacher's scale, calculate a 3% raise, and tabulate that all the way down. So beginning teacher salary, every salary will get the same amount of increase. This coming year, a 3% raise equates to a $1,784 raise per teacher. In addition to the teacher category, we have a 3% raise for all other groups, and that's a traditional 3% raise. It's not a flat raise. And the third thing that we focused on was we gave a raise for our coaching staff, which is a 3% raise there as well. And we haven't moved the coaching salary in many, many years, so we felt like that was vitally important. So when you break those finances down, and you look at the increases, and Mr. Carter mentioned again, but I would like to highlight, our instructional cost is an increase of $609,142, but again, that's tied to salaries to the teaching staff. Administration, an increase of $1,888. Transportation, a decrease, a decrease of $116,076. And we did, in the FY '20 budget, we reduced the bus. We typically and historically have placed four buses in the budget each year as a replacement cycle. Thankfully, fuel prices have maintained pretty reasonably, so we, over the past couple of years, have been able to buy an extra bus as fuel prices have maintained. So we are good maintaining with three buses moving forward. Facilities, a decrease of $149,710, and again, $135,275. That is the use of carryover funds that I mentioned before. Food service is an increase of $101,928, and technology is an increase of $15,397. A couple of things that I would like to highlight, and again, to celebrate Smith County Schools, I would like to go to page, to page 30. If you indulge me just for a couple of minutes, I promise not to say much more. Highlights of Smith County Schools, 665 full-time employees, 64 part-time, 204 teachers administrators with a master's degree equating to 45.08% of our teaching staff, which is extremely high. 458 of our employees participate in our local insurance, local choice insurance program. I highlighted this earlier, budget increase, 3% flat raise for teachers, 3% raise for all other salary scales, and it does include a 3% raise for teachers. The next page, we highlight our transportation and our food service. Just some information for you as a funding body, the age of our bus fleet is 1997 to 2019. We have 57 route buses. Most of those drive two routes per day. We call it a country run and a town run. So we typically run our country runs early in the morning and local runs secondly. We travel 2,682 miles each day, and approximately 2,100 students are halted each day, which gives us, well, 482,760 miles driven in a academic year. Lot of miles, lot of bus miles within Smith County. With our food service operations, we have 12 cafeterias. Average number of breakfast meals, we serve 1,661 breakfasts per day. Lunch, 2,881. We serve 817,560 meals per year. A lot of food moving through the cafeterias of Smith County Schools. The next page is instruction, and this is the last piece I would like to highlight. And we have, with you all's, again, you signed a resolution to support this as well, the Strasser Five Initiative to reduce the total number of chronically absent students, and we're seeing success there. Maker Space Initiative is in each school, and that promotes creativity, it promotes collaboration, it promotes communication and skills working together within our libraries, and we have, we actually have 3D printers in every library in Smith County Schools. So a lot of, lot of work's going toward helping our students become more collaborative learners. Project-based learning professional development for our staff members, as we know, for our staff to maintain competitiveness within our state and within our nation, additional training is needed, as with any employer. So we do have additional professional development going on. Trauma-informed community professional development, and Smith County Schools is heavily involved with dealing with our youngsters that are coming to us that have experienced trauma. We have a lot of youngsters that have difficult home lives, and we're training our staff to help with understanding and skills to help integrate those students within the classroom more readily. On-time graduation rate of 94.9%, which is astounding. Early college scholars, 85 students. 55 of our students with current technical education credentialing, 296 diplomas earned, and we do have a Chromebook in every high school student's hand that goes back and forth from home. That is theirs upon graduation. They take care of it for four years and three benefit fees for four years, we give it to them at graduation, and that's through a grant through the state. There are many, many good things going on in Smith County Schools, and I do want to highlight, it is not due to me, nor it is due to our staff, nor our school board. It is a collaborative effort, everyone working together. Decisions are made collaboratively, and with your help and support from the financial end, we will continue to do great things in Smith County. Are there any questions I can answer for you?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I just have a couple of observations.
Sure.
I live in the country.
Yes, ma'am.
And I've noticed that there are children standing out before 7:00 in the dark, and they don't get home till after 4:30. And I'm sure it's because of local transportation, but that does concern me for their safety, and that's a long day.
It is.
I don't know if there's any remedy to that. Also, we mentioned a 3% increase across the board. And I think concerned about, even as always of master degree teachers with years of tenure, barely being able to afford the basic essentials of life. 3% of 100,000 is a lot more than 3% of 40. And in a lot of pay scales, it's incremented. So am I understanding correctly that it's not incremental? It's just?
Actually, your point is exactly why we do what we do. If you take 3% at the top of the scale, which is 60,000, around $60,000, and you equate 3% to that, every person receives that amount of raise. So if we were to take 3% of beginning salary teacher, that's much less than it would be to the top of the salary scale. Is that your, is that your question?
That's not exactly. Because I wonder whether there's not a scale that increments, you know, on the lower levels to get more of an increase, because as I said, 3% of 100,000 is a lot more than 3% of 40.
At the back?
But I see what you're saying.
Yes, ma'am. And actually, if you'll look at the back of the book, there is a salary scale that will answer your question.
In the past, when I've worked at the salaries, they're different. Like you get so much for half of a master's degree, and so much for a master's, so much extra for coaching and all that type of thing. So, you know, it's a little here and there with it. But also, and this has been true issue totally, but I know we've had a problem sometimes with recruiting and retaining of really good teachers in Washington County. So that's kind of been an area of concern.
No, your concern actually is why that is the number one priority for Smith County Schools. So if you look at budget priorities, your concern is number one. I would like to say, and again, I'm speaking out of turn and based on perception of what I've been told by surrounding counties, our biggest cost to compete is against Washington County, with county, just those surrounding us. If you can go hit 81 and go south 10 miles, you know, the old adage is you can make $5,000 per year. If you go north, you can make $5,000 per year. We will be, we've been able to give, again, the flat raises as we are, we have over the past three years gone from 32.5 to 36.484 as a beginning salary. And with that, our beginning salary will be, and again, about $300 less beginning salary than another division that is beside of us. I don't want to give that information per se because it's nothing official at this point, but we are becoming, as the years progress and we handle our salary scale like we are, every year we're becoming more and more competitive in the ability to compete. But you're right, our biggest issue is cost to compete, recruitment and retention. So not only getting the teachers in to teach for us, but to keep them. And that, you know, the salary is one thing, but also the benefit side as well. So the cost of insurance, everything, things of that sort.
Sure.
I just want to make sure everybody, and make sure I look, the 3% is off the top.
Yes.
Pay scale. So the $30,000 employees not getting 3% of theirs, they're getting 3% of the 61,250.
Yes, sir.
How much was it?
Sure, I'm sorry. The total is 17?
Eighty-four.
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 Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And so what that equates to, Ms. Wyatt, is at the bottom of the scale, you're looking at about a 5% raise as opposed to a 3% raise when you do that. So that's our way to catch up and then become more competitive with the recruitment phase. Yes, sir. It's worked well for us over the past few years.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have two, three, four questions. Page 18, and while you're turning our, the status of the intermediate school, is anything in your budget that?
No, sir.
Not a word in there about it?
There is not. And our, our, our numbers may be off. I think our numbers are off a little bit in the new book, but that's okay, use your own. I can answer your questions without the budget book. We do not have anything in the budget currently for Marion Intermediate School. We do have cost comparisons for asbestos abatement and demolition. The original thought process was to salvage the gym. As you know, a gym is needed in Marion. That's a major need in Marion. We actually have heat in the floor area, under the floor, to maintain the floor as much as we can during the winter. So if we would not do that, then the floor would buckle and it would be lost. The floor is salvageable. We could come up with company sand and polyurethane and we're good. The core building, the gymnasium is solid. It's the wings that are the problem. But as far as within our budget to do anything, we do not have our, we have 14 buildings and Marion Intermediate School, and our, in totality, our maintenance budget is tied to upkeep and maintenance of the existing 14 buildings. And the thought process there is, we need to take care of where our kids are, and the 14 are there, but that's a reasonable.
I could ask that question.
Sure, I'm sure. Yes, sir.
All right. Well, getting into, I'm looking at the revenues.
Okay.
What I'm looking at.
Yes, sir.
You're talking about the basic. Number one question, you have a new line item there, compensation supplement bonus payments, 956,000, a new item. What is that?
That is actually the governor's money coming in in legislature for the teacher raises. And let me talk a little bit about that, if I may.
You gonna get into ex-split to do?
Do what?
You gonna get into that, what they call split funding?
Split, depending on the category. There's a couple of different things to talk about split funding. So the governor proposed a 5% raise that was passed by legislature, and that has to be over the biennium. So the biennium is a two-year period. We're on the, we're going into the second half of the biennium. So in order to qualify for the state money for the raise, which is the $900,000, we have to certify as a school division that we have given 5% over the biennium. As you know, we gave a 2% this year. So we're in, our teachers receive a 2%. In addition, we gave a $300 bonus for full-time, a $150 bonus at Christmas, but that does not equate to this. So we gave a 2% this year, and next year the budget is a 3%, which qualifies us for that 900,000. If we were to reach an impasse to where we only gave a 4%, that money would be reduced to 4% equation with standards of quality.
Okay. Good. I knew there had to be something.
Yes, sir.
State just, and my second question, the sales tax adjustment by Smith County Schools, what do you mean by what are you doing?
Sales tax is a moving figure, and for us to rely heavily and solidarily on that number that's given by the state, that is a fluid number. So we take precaution in using that number. History tells us that we can't count on that money being accurate. So the $50,000 threshold of preservation keeps us in a comfort level for us. So for us to say, we're going to get $100,000, and it comes up with $50,000 short from a vegetarian at the end of the year, we could have issue making payroll. So we take a conservative approach. Historically, we've done that, and it's worked well for us.
And we do the same thing on the county budget. You can't take that number and put it in there. You just can't.
Yeah, there's so many factors that relate to that.
Okay, and at the split funding, which is that with the at-risk and the special education, that's sort of that two-year thing also?
It is, and that actually fluctuates, and legislature has the ability to shift funds and have it split funded one year and in totality the next. So that's, those are actually things that are established at the state level that come into calculation template with us. Those numbers are predetermined. So we key in our numbers, and that comes in, and that's given to the state.
When you look at prior year versus this year, the proposed budget, those numbers make a tremendous difference.
Huge difference. And when you compare, and if you're comparing FY '19 to FY ' And, and when you compare, and if you're comparing FY '19 to FY '20, you've got to be cautious to look, one year it may be split, the next year it's not, and you have to find the split and where it's split and add the two numbers for comparison. That's mine.
Ms. Carter, it has been a pleasure working with you on the school board and the things, and I just, I really appreciate the straightforward approach. Totally agree, it's a, it's a team situation, so I'm real pleased. I hope, I hope the school system is, is pleased with, as well. So we appreciate you having worked there.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Maybe I got that a little backwards. I had Mr. Carter come up before I asked if anybody else wanted to speak, so does anybody wish to speak on the matter for the school here? We'll close the public hearing. Thank you very much. You better get to your house.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the time.
Ms. Kendra, would you like to, we'll keep you a while, but you were on a court appeal, but FAM tour update, please?
This should be a, a real quick brief informational update. I gave Kelly some time, I'm gonna pass down for you all to look out. Every year, well, this is the second year rather, VIA and VDP work together to create a list of consultants from across the United States. This year they were from Atlanta area to come visit different sites within our locality and surrounding counties. This year they were focused on incentives and kind of site selection and things of that nature. So our locality chose to take them to Pathway Park. We did a kind of outdoor classroom presentation style. Mr. Carter gave a really great presentation with the information that you all have in your hands. That just gives them a brief overview of all the great things that Pathway Park has to offer. After the Pathway Park tour, we took them to Shoaly and let them talk about their expansion and the great things that are happening with them. And they kind of did just a little brief discussion on operating in Smith County. We talked about incentives. Like I said, that was a, a big thing that they wanted to, to get to know, the things that we have to offer locally and with the state. And hopefully soon, within a week or two, we should be, be receiving some feedback from the consultants on the tour, what they thought, maybe how we can tweak it next time to make it better. But that's basically it. If you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Somebody have any questions? Thank you very much. I, I hope that's, we're all got our fingers crossed. Thank you, Chairman. Building and grounds committee, Mr. Stevenson?
Uh-uh, we didn't do that.
You did that, and I did a while ago. Let me keep going. Emergency communications committee update, page 27 to 29.
We met April 23rd to receive the bids for the, review bids for the 911 emergency medical transportation services. It was an RFP that was placed out. We reviewed those at the meeting. Mr. Harrington, emergency management coordinator, reviewed them real thoroughly, and his recommendation was to reject all the bids and to allow the softball rescue squad to continue to operate. We continued our discussion with committee members. The squad had stated, the softball rescue squad had stated it was their intention to continue to operate until July 1st, when new funding would be available for mental assault in Smith County. All members of the committee communicated it was not the intent of the Smith County Board of Supervisors to shut down the squad, stating that it was all in the best interest of the citizens and for them to continue to operate. After discussion, Mr. Carter made a motion to reject the RFPs. And that was seconded and unanimously voted on unanimously. So I guess that's a committee recommendation to reject the RFP bids.
Chairman, I think there's a couple other points to that motion.
I'm kind of trying to, there was a little more in there, and that's, I didn't not perceive any of it. And in that discussion, it was to form a committee to continue working toward the solution for the EMS issue within Smith County, and to support the efforts being put, put forth by softball rescue squad to continue to operate. All right, so all of that was in, there was a committee, or it, I guess I've not heard of who's consisted of that committee. Mr. Harrington was making up that committee of members of each squad and-
That's correct. My understanding was he was going to be talking with the chiefs of each one of those to form that committee.
I don't know if that committee has been formed yet, but that was the, that was how we left that meeting, was to have all those, have a new committee made up of, not me, because I'm a board supervisor's member, I don't know, you know, we needed it with the inside of the rescue squads and firing EMS, people that are involved in that, to make that committee up of what we needed to do, progress and forward. So within that motion, it was to reject the bids and, well, I guess that was, is that what, that's all we need a motion for, I would suppose, correct? The other is, because the committee was formed or being formed?
Yes, sir. And may I add one thing?
Yes, sir, please.
I think if I look around the column in here, I think, I'm putting him on the spot, I think Jason Masha's sitting out here in the audience, and he's the new president of the softball rescue squad. So it may be good for the board to at least hear some, some comments from Jason. I know you've got some, and just to kind of give them a, before you do any type of consideration of the motion, I think it'd be good to have a little update, if that's okay.
Okay. Jason, come on.
All right, y'all. That's the topic of the round then. It's just our current roster. We had added a few members in recent days. It's also attached at the bottom is a call by your report for the, the month of April. We have provided Mr. Harrington with the information he requested during that meeting, so his office has everything I believe that they wanted at that point. The new board met for the first time last week. Still trying to get their feet under them. We got a little bit of idea of what kind of shape we come into, what kind of message we've inherited. We will still be struggling to get the first, till the, the beginning of fiscal year, July 1st, obviously, but nobody there is throwing them the towel, giving up. There is money left in the accounts. The softball council will be delighted to vote on purchasing the tractor premises, if that's still their intent. That would be a $10,000 purchase, which will give us enough proceeds to, to make payroll two and a half, three weeks there after that, plus the additional fundraisers we have planned. We will be depositing the fundraiser money that we have already secured to, to continue to make payroll for the next couple of weeks to get time for that to go on. So, pending, they'll come, can I tell me, and I can provide you with a little more information, but unfortunately, that's after this, so we'll move ahead.
Yes, sir.
I, I appreciate the efforts that you guys are putting into this. I really do. And I, I don't think it's going unnoticed. I think everybody's appreciative of, of what you guys are stepping up and doing, and I think it's a win-win for everybody. And I think those, I think those labors will pay off for you guys, I really do. So thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Good question.
Anybody else? Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Are y'all leaving? Casey, you leaving?
No, I'm just gonna sit down on the chair.
Oh, okay.
I can leave, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, that was a, we still need to take action on rejecting the bids, RFPs.
I'm making a motion to reject.
Well, it's a committee recommendation. I just, if there's any more discussion, we'll take a vote on it. Hold on a second. Interns committee, Mr. Blevins, Mr. Carter, were you in on that, or who else was on the committee to take that?
I bet we're letting Lisa talk a little bit. She's been involved in that.
The interns committee met on Wednesday, April 24th, at 3:45 PM. I was up for discussion. First was a program through VRS called Genworth Long-Term Care Optional Insurance. VRS offers this to its state employees and some of the localities from sometime back were able to enroll in the long-term care. It hasn't been open to localities for some time, but now they are opening it up for new members. And we had the opportunity as a county to offer this program to our employees for a voluntary basis where they can elect to enroll, and we can take the premium cost through their payroll deduction. It's no cost to the county for qualifying full-time employees. The open enrollment period is September 16th and October 11th, and we have to notify the budget for a change if it's something we elect to allow our employees to do. After discussion, softball district, Rossell Call made a motion to make this available option to all employees who may be interested, and all agreed unanimously.
So that is the committee recommendation. Any more discussion? Hold on a favor?
The second item on the agenda was concerning a vendor change for the, for VaCOR's hybrid plan disability. Currently, VaCOR provides a short-term, long-term disability for hybrid plan employees, and they offer that through Standard Life Insurance Company, that's who administers the program for them. They have put out an RFP and selected a new vendor to supply that service in the future, and that provider is Anthem. They'll be replacing Standard Insurance, and this is mainly just a, a change that we didn't necessarily have a vote in, that's just they elected a new vendor and it was a, just to let me know, make us aware of it. It did result in a lower rate offered to the county for short-term and long-term disability. And, but that really didn't require a vote, just permission only.
Okay. Thank you. Ordinance committee recommendations from Ms. Wyatt, page 31 to 34, do you have?
Actually, this meeting on April the 17th was kind of, we'll just follow up to our meeting on March the 12th. And at that point, there was a recommendation had been sent to the planning commission to incorporate more than 530 roads within the county in a comprehensive plan that could be utilized by VDOT. And it was explained by Lisa that since that time requested, we'd received requests by citizens to apply for a revenue share project with VDOT. And so the decision was made to try and incorporate all this into the same document as it was being revised. Right?
That's correct.
Yeah.
I will just state that the, the two streets of concern actually had applied back in 2013, so it was from a previous quest.
Right. So also that the committee then discussed land use in conservation easements. And Craig Williams with Building and Zoning Administration explained the process that landowners used to place property in a conservation easement. He stated that once a parcel is placed into conservation easement, all development rights are given up to that property. And after the discussion, the committee scheduled a meeting for May the 1st to continue the discussion on conservation easements. Also at that meeting, Mr. Williams brought forward information concerning the stormwater management program and the difficulties the building and zoning department was experiencing with staffing and managing the program. We, as a committee, discussed those options presented by Mr. Williams, and with no one in favor of repealing the stormwater management ordinance, it was recommended that we make a motion to send the issue to the personnel committee to hire two people with the building and zoning department.
Does the first, with the VDOT, does that need a, that doesn't need a motion?
I think you're going to address that at your next committee meeting on May 1st.
Combined with the other?
Yeah. Yeah, what kind of roles it needs to have.
Okay.
So do we want to go into the May 1st meeting? So then, we met again on May 1st, and this was to discuss land use in conservation easements. And Mr. Williams stated that once a parcel is placed into the conservation easement, all development rights again are given up to that property. He also reviewed the land use map that's currently in the comprehensive plan, and the committee reviewed parcels along the 81 corridor that are currently designed commercial slash industrial and made suggestions on incorporating new parcels into the map, and that map is attached.
May I interrupt here and state, we also reviewed 107 and 16?
Yes, we did.
Not just 81?
So the committee voted to accept the changes as presented to the comprehensive plan and to schedule a public hearing in June the 11th, 2019, at 5:30. The info public input on these changes.
Mr. Chairman, just clarifications, that includes the roads and the conservation portion of-
The public hearing will include both of those?
Yes.
There's, there's some changes, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, feel my-
The changes on the map here is what I incorporated, right? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm all for what the committee done as far as public hearing and everything. Maybe we can take a vote on it, and then I'll go ahead with this, uh, but we're gonna have a public hearing. I'd like for these landowners to get a letter in advance that their property's up for discussion.
Oh, one of my questions is going to ask, if, if these property owners, have, have they been contacted?
Not to my knowledge.
I wasn't at any meeting, but I'm, I'm not sure that they have been.
I didn't hear that status that they would be.
Should that be-
Washington's second meeting, Char Con, but I don't-
Would that come out of your committee to, as a motion to do that, or?
I would think it has to do with them. They, they have to be put on notice if their land's being-
Right.
Yeah, whether zoning department are handling it, or somebody's got to handle it. They got to be notified.
It's, it, it could be a potential impact to parcel owners.
Right. Well, if you need to do on the committee recommendation, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion and make sure there's contact before we have this public meeting.
They need to be sent an official letter.
Yes.
Or we can direct you without a motion, or you need a motion?
Preferably, if, if you're going to incorporate it in one motion or two motion, whatever, but I think you need to direct for that letter, the, for that portion to be put together and sent to the appropriate parcel owners in advance of this public hearing, which I think you said was June sometime. So it's, it needs to go out fairly quickly.
Is, is there a, a little better map we could, this is kind of confusing. Yeah, is there a little better map we could, kind of have access to, to see where we are on? Yes.
That would be with the, a building and zoning department.
The, this map or the official map?
The official map.
The parcels.
Yeah.
It would be GIS, wouldn't it? It would be building and zoning.
Combination. So are all of, and y'all may know from the meeting, but, so the proposed changes are the ones with the X's in them.
Right.
Are each one of those one parcel deep? There, it's a, go on there to several landowners or parcels?
This is, that whole parcel goes from Ed's, to you, and I think all the way up to where DNA extractor used to be.
Okay. Let's say I was in getting that mixed up, or what I was saying was, here, I guess I shouldn't have that.
You're talking that song to over six, seven hours.
Yeah.
So, who's, who identified these parcels?
The committee.
For the man, on the screen.
Yeah, well, and I guess that's our, I guess that'd be our homework to, to-
Between 107 and the old lines gap there.
Look at, look at this on a map, really kind of see where that, where that involves. I guess that's 81 going down through the center, but it's kind of hard to.
Mr. Chairman, I'm certainly not, but I don't have access to those, so if there's a letter to be written, I would ask a consideration to be given to the departments or pools that put these parcels together to disseminate that letter.
Yeah, if you want to vote on the committee, and by that means I'm not trying to do your job, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to, to move to have them letters sent out by that department.
I guess the committee recommendation is to, is to set a public hearing, is that correct?
Yes.
So the committee, I, I guess we, we'll start on, schedule a public hearing on June the 11th at 5:30. Do you want to, well, that's a committee recommendation. So we'll, we'll vote on that, and then if you want to make a motion to, for letters or what, we-
Yeah.
All right. So the committee recommendation is to set a public hearing for June the 11th for these changes. Is there any more discussion?
Let me identify one thing.
Yes, sir.
In the addition of the roads, that portion of the complaint, that coincides with the VDOT application process for- VDOT application process for revenue share programs, which the portal closes on July one. So the land deal is a little different because there's not as that timeframe, but the road portion of it certainly has a window in which to be able to consider that in to get those revenue sharing projects in the system prior to that expiration date.
Do you want to do it separately?
No, I think you can do it both. I just wanted to add that, that for that portion, it can't be an extended period of consideration. Because if you go past that July deadline.
Past the public hearing.
You're done for two years on revenue share projects.
All right. Well, there's a committee recommendation to set the public hearing for the eleventh of June at five thirty. All those in favor?
Now, you need to move.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we instruct Mr. Carter to advise the Building and Zoning to send out letters to all property owners involved in this as soon as possible so they have plenty of time to review them before the public hearing.
Got a motion on the floor?
Second.
In a second. Any more discussion?
Just looking at the map, there's some reasons about this. I would stress doing due diligence to get it to correct addresses and places. Just looking at that map, there are probably some changes of addresses and different things maybe in the last little bit for some of those owners. And I would stress doing due diligence to make sure everybody is.
Do we want to do this certified?
I think you probably have to.
And I, I think it, I agree. I think we ought to go out certified. I don't, you know, I think we ought to be very transparent about it. That's one thing we preach here, is I think we ought to be very transparent about it. I think we ought to make sure we get them, they have them with plenty of times to ask questions and I don't want to blindside anybody that's got a piece of property.
I'm not going to. I mean, I, I get, I get the, yeah, the gist and the idea, I get it. But yeah, I agree.
So we got a motion to tell anyone to send them certified?
Yes.
In a second.
Any more discussion on the, sending the letter certified? All those in favor?
May I ask the committee a question first? These, these others adjacent to it, are you familiar with them? How come they wasn't incorporated or why certain ones was picking and certain ones weren't?
Well, Phil, they were, they were along Interstate Ivy corridor mostly and over one oh seven and the other lane. But it was a joint meeting with the Planning Commission also. So Charlie, you may, you may have something to add. Phil's question is, did we look at the adjoining, is that right, Phil? The joining?
Yeah, I mean, did you just go pick out certain properties along these roads or did it go with the whole road or what was the plan?
We looked at the whole, like with one oh seven, we looked at the whole road, building department, town limits.
So you only chose to change a few of them or not?
We looked, we looked for pieces of property that were conducive to industry growth.
Yeah. That like had water and sewer and type of infrastructure there was limited.
Well, what's wrong with the land on the right side of one oh seven, on the left side of one oh seven?
Good point.
I mean, it's.
I think already in.
I, I have problems with this map. I, for my area, it just don't seem right.
Well, I think we, the left side there has got, you got the hill and everything and we just.
The right side's just as hill.
You got the trash dump and all that.
Which is even more reason why the left side would suit itself to be more of industrial development than the right side. You already got the trash dump and the transfer station. So there's, there's infrastructure there. There's commercial stuff there. Why would you not identify it when you identify the right side of them? You got, I mean, the right side of it.
Well, maybe, maybe, I mean, if we're moving forward, we got a motion that passed for the, the letters to go out and for the public hearing to be set. So I, I want to go to Craig's office, I want to see if that a map, see what he is doing. So I, I just recommend that all of us, if, do our homework, be prepared for public hearing as well to know what these parcels are. And that's, the public hearing, that's what it'd be set up for. And if, if there's questions or comments, then we won't vote on it that night anyway. You'll take that in consideration at a later date.
Mr. Chairman?
So you wouldn't have the VDOT roads, but you could the land use portions.
I'm not telling you what to do, but you really need to consider those VDOT roads as soon as.
Well, and we could, I don't think that's the one that's being in question tonight. So I mean, that's something we could, we could lay the rules and vote on at the night of the hearing for the, for the roads, as far as that goes.
Mr. Chairman, this of course was, it's an expensive project. So I think that's, that's only prudent that closer looks be taken at it.
Oh, yeah. Is this a comprehensive?
Well, I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
No, go ahead.
I mean, you taking people, this is the problem I have with it. And I get the industrial part of it, okay? But the issue's going to be here, you're taking people, and your one oh seven is a good explanation. You're taking people on one side of the road and leaving it open where they can get land used or land, which is huge, especially to some people. And then on the other side of the road, you're saying, okay, we're going to take that away from it. Now, what I'd like to see, which I don't have time, and I'm sure I'm not the only one here, don't have time to go and sit airs in the zoning, is by the time we get this public meeting, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have a more detailed map, even if they had to have several sheets of it. I think there's going to be a lot of discussion. I think this is going to, this is probably going to be like one of them deals like when Rich Valley come up for a change in zone and you're stepping on some toes right here.
Well, and here's the thing, it's no secret in this county, you've got only a few major land players for development and advancement. And they should be at the table, not us dictating them how their land's going to be. You ain't going to get, I mean, it's, it's ass backwards. You ain't going to get anything from them if you come to them and shove industrial zoning down their throat for their parcel. You might as well just write that off. Not just no, but hello.
Or.
You might ought to rethink your approach instead.
I, I think we can express ourselves a little bit more dignified until accomplished the same.
Well, we set a public meeting for it, so if we can just, if we could.
Do you think that's possible?
Yeah, and I just want to follow up. I have a meeting with, with I think one of these owners, Mr. Dishner and her EDA chairman has that tomorrow. So the last thing we want to do is go in there and look like we're not being completely clean with it.
No, no. I'd just like to have some maps here the night of the public.
Why don't we try to get some of the larger sheet maps, maybe on the boards that we can have up on a easel or something where you can do that way.
Hopefully the adjacent landowners, like, and I don't understand this map, because I can easily look at it, say, Prince, but this thing blows my mind. I mean, you got six oh nine, it's ridiculous. If it had some roads to go back, you'd have it.
I got real problems with changing one side of the road, changing the other. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. And why, why are they in front of Elm Interstore? Why does that need to be industrial? We've got, we've got sites open and industrial.
I'm sorry.
It's not.
I think so. I don't think you get it.
It's not rezoning it industrial. It's just saying it's not the way we want it going.
Mr. Chairman, one thing, this is a joint public hearing, by the way.
So with the Planning Commission?
I just want to make sure that we know it's a joint.
I don't know that June the eleventh is going to be a good night. Don't we have one longer than? Well, we got a board meeting on June the eleventh.
Oh, we've got a lot on June the eleventh.
I think we ought to come up with a different night for this.
And I would agree, but again.
Well, separate them. Separate the, the roads out from the, from this.
I don't care if we can do it on June the eleventh. I don't care.
I mean, if, if, if the, if the road is the issue, then can we not just separate them out instead of, I want more information on this myself. This is a, this is a pretty bold move.
So that, that comprehensive, this part didn't have to be done by June the eleventh, does that?
No, and you, you guys on the committee, correct me, but I, I think what I heard was, was the idea was to be able to have the comp plan all on one night so they made it easier. But all I can again express is that the road thing is important, but the road thing is essential. It has a timeline to it.
To make a motion, well, it was a committee recommendation. How do we get out of a committee recommendation for the public hearing to be able to change that to separate the two out? Can we sep, if we can separate the two out?
You can, you can bifurcate. If you want to deal with one part of it.
So what I'm thinking we need to do, I've, I've never heard the word bifurcate, sir. I got, I know what it means, I've just never heard it before.
I'm glad you said that because I couldn't say it.
I got the gist, man.
Please don't ask Mr. Taylor.
My family's, sometimes speaks Scottish and I can't understand it, but I know the gist. I follow what's happening.
Dave, that's a bold one. Gee, they got to be comfortable.
Two of those teams down there on the end of the team. Yeah, he got to do vocabulary, but. We want to bifurcate this and, and separate them into two different, two different lights. That's what we want to do.
Okay, so we're going to do the road portion?
Yes. And we're going to set that June the eleventh. I think we're good with having the public hearing on that for June the eleventh.
With the planning commission.
Yeah, and I think that will, but now I took a vote on, on having that. I took a vote on having that, of that recommendation of doing the two together.
You need to look right instead of left.
I'm afraid you're telling me something else.
You're saying you took a vote in committee.
I took a committee recommendation. We voted on setting the public hearing for both of it, two separate issues. We need to separate those.
So, and you took a vote on it, you need to rescind the prior motion and entertain a new motion to bifurcate the recommendation, advertise for a public hearing with respect to the road.
Can I have a motion to rescind the, to res?
Rescind the prior motion to advertise for a public hearing.
Okay. Any more discussion on rescinding that motion and, or committee recommendation of both? All those in favor? All right. Now I need a motion that we proceed with the June eleventh, was it at five thirty? I've lost my page. At five thirty for the, for the road portion.
With the planning commission jointly?
Jointly with the planning commission.
Okay.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Now I need a motion to bifurcate. Right, correct?
Well, no, not, no longer.
Not just to bifurcate, but to bifurcate the, for the, um.
You just did.
Well, you just did.
That did.
All you did was you rescinded the approval of the prior recommendation to handle both in, in the public hearing. And now you've retained a new motion and approved a new motion to only maintain the road portion.
Okay. And that's what we've done.
We're not calling it bifurcation, that's what you.
Okay. So we're good then. Now we will just continue, we need to set, we don't need to set a date, do we, until, to visit this ordinance change?
Well, you still have a committee recommendation for that, but is that going to give you and everyone else the opportunity to get the questions answered? And I mean, if you do that, you're going to have it on a different date, which you're going to anyway. So if you want to go ahead and set it for July or whatever the date is, which is, looks like July the ninth, maybe that gives everyone time to get a better idea of whatever. There you go.
If we're going to do that, if we're going to set it a separate date, we probably would have set it on a date where the planning commission would meet.
Well, the planning commission to me does, there are appointments.
Amen, Mr. Chairman.
Is there anything on July the ninth?
I like it on the July, don't you?
Yeah.
Make a motion and.
It would have been six o'clock.
I ain't going to try that, move it to July the ninth.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Because you have one at five thirty already.
Yeah. Motion is made to July the ninth at six o'clock to have the, what do you call that? Ordinance and send the invite to the planning commission.
Conservation, something. We'll get the right wording out here somewhere, but that's the portion of the comp plan it pertains to.
And I would just urge, I would urge the board members within question, instead of maybe waiting on that information being brought to us, maybe if y'all could kind of get Craig to prepare that for us, like a packet of it maybe or something, would that be?
This is involved, it's like laying one map over the other map. Yeah.
Well, I, I don't, I don't know how else we would get to, and I'm not, I'm not downplaying the committee's recommendation or the committee's ability, it's just that's a very big move to make, a bold move, so I.
They can run, they can run sheets off like this with road numbers and no problem. Put them in a packet.
We can have them enlarged and available and maybe a quick run through from that, that staff department to.
I think that'd work if that's understandable.
Plus that gives additional time to get those letters sent to those impacted.
But I would do that, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, that'll go out in the next couple of weeks now, still in the next two days.
Personnel Committee, page thirty-five. I'm not taking a break because I got to be somewhere at seven thirty, so I'm just trying to get through here. All right. Planning Commission met, or the Personnel Committee met on April the twenty-fourth. There was recommendations had been made by the ordinance committee for the Personnel Committee to look at adding the staffing of two hires. And, and to, to, I guess that was all. Because on the other meeting that, well, I'm getting confused tonight. Ordinance Committee had done was for the storm water management, which, that's not an issue. I guess the main issue was the building and grounds that was kind of referred to us for personnel meeting. Administration gave an overview of the position regarding retirements, new hires, et cetera. Discussion continued by the committee and staff regarding concerns within the Building and Zoning Department. After lengthy discuss, discussion, Mr. Stevenson made a motion to deny the recommendation by the ordinance committee to hire additional staff requested by the zoning and building department. We stated that the advertisement had already been placed in, advertisement, where we've talked about it tonight, for the new building official. Mr. Call second and I agreed, so that was a manhood's recommendation. So do we handle that as a committee recommendation to vote on? All right. So that was the Personnel Committee's recommendation, was to not go for the two, just continue with the one. Mister, and I will say that Mr. Williams was there and, and there was a lot of clarification for room to grow in the office and people to get training and, and that kind of thing. So it wasn't just a, a yes and no kind of agreement. We, we discussed a whole lot of things about that, so. So that was the committee's recommendation. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Mr. Carter stated that it was becoming difficult to hire CDL drivers due to the starting pay. And we, the Budget Committee is going to discuss salaries and try to make adjustments as needed to aid in the hiring of those CDL drivers.
Chairman, may I add something?
Yes, sir.
You know, it used to be you could find boys that did that, but it's almost like wage wars out there now.
I, I tell you, I hate, it's chasing that green dollar, it's no matter what you do. But we, we need qualified drivers, we need dependable drivers, and we got to pay competitively to get that. competitively to get that, and, and.
I don't take $21,000 a year, you can say he's chasing the green dollar, it's probably down the pot, man.
Yeah, that's pretty, that's very low, so, so we're adjusting that. Water and sewer committee recommendations, Mr. Call?
Uh, yes, sir.
36 and 40?
Yes, I called the meeting to order at 4:39, we had a gentleman, Mr. Tate Field, spoke on concern, request for county to work against the water and sewer, he's a gentleman from Raff and Drive, that, uh, tax map, 478, that 67B, was putting a dog rescue kennel in, he was wanting water and sewer there, but he, and Mr. Tate, we made no recommendation on that, because it was just, had to go under interstate and all this stuff, and a whole lot of pipe to run, but we did encourage him to get drawings needed for the system and to contact the health department, see what guidelines would be for placement of pipes in that area, and, but we made no recommendation on that. Mr. Carter, who's any day water purchase contract with the town of Sawal, $3.50 per gallon, 4,000 gallons, affecting July 1st of this year, uh, Mr. Ray made a motion to recommend approving the contract, and Mr. Stevenson said a motion, and all agreed it was a committee recommendation.
So the committee recommendation to approve the contract?
That's all we had, yes, sir.
All right, uh, any more discussion of that is committee recommendation? Right, we go to 350 per thousand? All those in favor?
That's a rate for the, for the bound water, right?
We need to schedule a public hearing for the Rich Valley Fair, permit on June 11th at 6:30. Yeah, see, June's full, we got a lot of stuff to do in June. Uh, can I get a motion to schedule that?
Motion to schedule it, what a mess, June 11th.
My second.
Motion and second, any more discussion? All those in favor? Supervisor comment, Tom, Mr. Call?
Yes, sir. I'd like to acknowledge my friends from the rescue squad, set three hours to make bone meat, and, and the rest, and Jason, they're doing a fantastic job, I don't, no credit for it, they're doing it all, and I appreciate Mr. Ray's comment on it is improving, and it is, and it's all because of those guys, they're holding all kinds of sales, and every meeting we have, they come up with something else to come up with, to make a little dollar here and a dollar there, and it's showing up and it's looking good. We have good meetings now, and everything's going good, it's time to cut every way possible, uh, college seats and everything's coming in a lot better, and I'm just, I'm proud of them, I am, and I'll back them up 110 to 10 on anything they wanna do.
Very good, very good. Mr. Ray?
I'm here.
Mr. Ratchets?
Uh, just wanted to, um, I got an email from, text from Kelly back in the early part of the month, we had purchased the convenience station up in Ankers, shouldn't we have voted on that somewhere along the line? We talked about it, but we didn't vote on it, it's not on our minutes anywhere.
I think I made the most.
Uh, I think it come out of closed session for non-disclosed.
Yeah, we didn't vote on it.
Um.
It's not in our minutes tonight, we just approved a minutes, it didn't have it.
I, I remember.
I mean, I agree with it, I made a good deal.
But I remember, I remember doing the ex, the set amount of money to, yeah, uh, well, if you would, Kelly would do.
That is a motion to discuss the lease of the other transfer station, it's not in the minutes.
Well, but look, if it's not in the minutes, we'll, I know, and I didn't look at it, Charlie, but if it's not in there, we can correct it, so, um, but I, I do think, I, I remember it being talked about, I don't think we tried to pull the fast one necessarily as much as, it just might not have been put in the minutes correctly or something, but if it's not, we'll get that done.
I think we talked about it until, I wasn't there for closed session, but I think when we came out, we went right by it and never did it.
We had a deposit, and then we had a file, and payment, too.
And like I say, I'm gonna agree with this, and I just think we need to make sure we, we got it all done properly.
If, if not, we'll make sure, then.
Mr., anything else?
Uh, one final comment I'll make, and then I'll hush up about, you know, hear me talking about, uh, I thought, I still think the acceptance of this building as a gift from the county, from the state, is gonna be a, a money hit for us, I think we're gonna be spending a lot of money trying to keep it operating, and that's all.
Mr. Stevens?
I, you know, I'm gonna echo Ross, Mr. Call, uh, you know, the rescue squad, they take care of my community, too, uh, y'all, y'all picked it up, you went out, and you make sure you kept the doors open, and I, I appreciate that, and, you know, we're here to support you, we just, uh, I'm glad the president, I'm glad things is going the right way, and, uh, you know, ain't nobody gonna turn your back, so, so, I appreciate that. Uh, as far as to say anything, I'd comment on a building, you know, that's given to us, it's a gift, so we got a roof over our head, and, uh, you know, I just don't see how you could argue at the point that it was a gift, and even if we had to put a million dollars in, we couldn't, I'd hate to even think about building this building, uh, it'd break the backs of, of citizens of this county, but again, thank y'all, thank you for that, I don't know.
Mr. Squad?
Well, not to dig this thing about the building, um, Michael, I've been corresponding some with him on it, because I'm new on the board, and I just wanted some historical information, um, and I had remembered several years ago, when we were going through building projects with the courthouse and some different offices, that there was a plan to build a new county administration building, and, you know, this is past boards and decisions that are already made, and we have to live with it, but I think, Michael, did you tell me that, how much was it that was already paid for plants or any building, it was hundreds of thousands of dollars?
I'm sure.
And, of course, that's none of our responsibility, but.
Can I say something without interrupting? It was eight hundred some thousand dollars paid for a set of plants, and, you know, it, this urged me, this gets back to the top of the drag at the same, um, you know, at one time, it was almost a million dollars set on a set of plans, and just throw them away.
I know.
And you, you know what bothers me, and I'm sorry, I'm taking.
No, no, I'm glad that you're telling me.
You know, we're gonna lose one of the best people we have, Mr. Carrick, kind of a friend comments, and it was, it was, he's deer-headed, he said, get us a gift, a gift, not five dollars, not a hundred dollars, if we burn this thing down tomorrow, it was a gift, and, 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 you know, I hate to see it, this, but I, I don't wanna throw any mud, Mr. Carrick, oh, because I think it was a gracious, gracious thing on this part, and I think we ought to accept it with that grace, you know, if we close the doors on it, it didn't cost us anything.
Well, at this point, it kinda is what it is, you know, for better or for worse, um, and obviously, in an old building, you can do some structural issues, if we have an older home, you know, my, my daughter, they just renovated a hundred-year-old house, and there were situations with it, so, you know, it is a gift, but I do think that we need to look at, down there at five-year, ten-year, you know, there're gonna be things that will need to be repaired and replaced, and that's just, I think, part of the planning that you.
And, may I make a comment? I'm, I'm not a supervisor, that's for sure, but, and, and, and I get everything's been said, but the one thing that I go back and look at is the original investment that the county made back in the mid-'90s, which was over two million dollars, I've, I've got a folder here that identifies that, I go back and I look at the, what I call the maintenance and electricity and that kinda stuff, and, you know, over those same 25 years, you're looking at another almost two million dollars because of electrical costs being 60 and repair maintenance, I mean, you're looking around 70, 80,000 dollars a year over that timeframe, so you get to the end of it, regardless if you're at the end of that 25-year lease, or you're still in that 40-year lease, you've got that cost in it, and that's, that's taxpayer dollars, so at the end of it, and I think Mr. Ray has said this several times, we have the opportunity now to actually have a tangible asset for that, that cost that we put into it, and from my standpoint, you could still pursue, I know one of the questions was building another admin, you still do that, but now you're not under the gun to do it, because you have this facility, this is an asset that you can stand up and say, hey, guys, we spent this over these years, and we have something to show for it, as opposed to, we spent this over the years and we walked away from it, so.
Well, like I said, this is, it is what it is now, but, you know, as we've corresponded, even the estimate for boiler is a few hundred thousand, so it is a gift, that we are gonna have some expenses with it, and that's the way it is.
Mr. Chair?
Mm-hmm.
May I, may I say something? I know I've been passed, but I like bond debt that we have out on the school courthouse, on Oak Point, from the courthouse of the county.
Originally, or, or now?
Just rough now.
It was originally around 50 million dollars.
50 million dollars, a new building was probably in, uh, 20 to 30 million dollars in bo, in, in bonds?
I thought the original estimate was, what, four, six?
Back, back, now, this was 09, 10, and we were talking about a 10-year-old assessment here, uh, facility bid came in somewhere just under 5 million, the infrastructure came in just under a million, so combined, you were about almost 6 million dollars, so.
And, and that's, that, that, we're in a completely different, I mean, E and S now, and all the corporate bids I'm building today, let's, let's say 10 to 15 million in bonds, we got a long ways to go before we spend 10 to 15 million dollars in taxpayers' money, and, and we talked about not raising taxes, and ran on the basis of not having a tax raise, well, you go out and start running off 10, 15 million dollar bonds, that debt service is gonna have to be paid for or something.
Mr. Try, I don't wanna debate this, but those are just rough estimates off the top of your head, so.
They're more accurate.
Well, I, and this, yeah, this, and, we're getting out of whack, but are you done with comment, Tom, or you got more?
If you want me to do it.
No, you, it's comment time, it's your time to say.
You know, I feel like, that we each have a right to express our concerns, we're here, for the benefit of that's interest of our citizens, and it is taxpayer's dollars, as I mentioned, it is what it is now, we have it, and we have to go with it, um, we're not responsible for decisions that pass forward, but from a financial standpoint, I'm just personally saying, I think it's regrettable that maybe other decisions were taken, that's just my supervisor comment.
True.
Yeah.
There's 10 years, 10 years elapsed in between today and when all this happened, so, a lot could happen.
And, and it's my time to make a comment, and I'll take a little ownership here tonight, I was on the board when that decision died, but it did not die because of me, that it was chugging along, and we were getting where we needed to be, and I have told this to anybody that listened to me, I think out of the 16 years of me sitting on this board supervisors, that was the biggest mistake that got made while I've been sitting here, is that because I felt like that would have, that would have changed the parking garage, the courthouse renovations, it would, I mean, there's a multitude of things that that turned into, and I would like to make my claim that mine was on the affirmative of moving forward with making that happen, and it didn't get the support, when it did, it died, there was money lost, there was vision lost, but you gotta have, as they say, it's a 4-3 world, this, I was, you know, I, I got outvoted, but, um, I, I totally understand that, as far as the building, I'm, I'm tickled to death we got this building, and I think we're, I think we're, yeah, we're gonna have our maintenance or whatnot issues, but, um, I'm, I'm proud to, that Smith County is in on this bad boy.
So we just, we just need a plan, I think, probably, a long, long-range plan.
No, no.
So that we can.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Before you can, Jim, can I say one short thing?
One short?
Yeah, uh, make a resolution that we please ask the sheriff department not to shut my house at midnight with goddamn books.
What?
Yeah, I got my fake, I got my packet at midnight, overnight, um, you know, it's a little bit almost stupid, here I go to the door with a gun in the back of my britches, somebody knocks on, come on, somebody knocked on your door at midnight?
They just sleep mine in my door.
And the guy says, we were told to do it.
I got the same thing, not this back, I picked mine up one night, and it was like, somebody's out there knocking on the door, I'm glad mine comes out the correct way, my girl, she's jumping out the cliff, do you? Do we have a continued meeting, Mr. Carter? Do we have a continued meeting?
I did mine on time, that's that, I had a big gun.
Who Brian McGraw, I was in bed, I was like, who Brian?
Picking that up. Hey, you know, sheriff's office, I didn't leave, I get by.